Call to order the organizational meeting for January 9th, 2018. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Larry Armstrong?
Here.
Sean Douglas?
Here.
Michael Howery?
Here.
Michelle Hayes?
Here.
Gene Sensi?
Here.
Okay, oath of office.
Thank you. Sean, Michael, and Michelle, if you could raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform your duties as a board member of the Board of Education of Madison Local School District in Lake County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and set office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. If you can pass down the sheet, I appreciate it.
Okay, and can I get approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move. Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Okay, and election of president. Can I go ahead and nominate someone? I would like to nominate Sean Douglas for president for the 2018-19 school year.
This is neat not to be seconded, but I'll second it.
Yeah, unless you have another one, you don't need to second.
Okay.
Okay.
And then during this roll call, you would just state the name of the person you want for president.
Very good, roll call.
Larry Armstrong?
Sean Douglas.
Sean Douglas.
I'm staying.
Michael Howery?
Sean Douglas.
Michelle Hayes?
Sean Douglas.
Gene Sensi?
Sean Douglas.
Sean Douglas. Here, here.
Oh, and now we need nomination for the election of the vice president.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Hayes.
Any other nominations? Roll call, please.
Larry Armstrong?
Michelle Hayes.
Sean Douglas?
Michelle Hayes.
Michael Howery?
Michelle Hayes.
Michelle Hayes?
Uh, Michelle Hayes.
Gene Sensi?
Michelle Hayes.
Thank you, and should Sean and I switch now or at the next? Okay.
Would you like to sit here and go down there?
Um, it makes absolutely no difference.
How about it?
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Oh, I think he just switched. It's all right.
Can you do that?
Yeah, I'll just move down there, it's okay.
No.
We don't want to have men on one and women on the other.
I thought president and vice president could be together.
No, that's okay.
All right.
I'll move down there, thank you.
Very often music's stopping.
Oh. Here, you need that. I'm trying to keep the power over here.
And then she gets her gavel, doesn't she?
I don't need it.
I need her new gavel.
We haven't purchased a gavel. That one's from 2013 because the treasurer's too cheap to buy one.
And that's, I'm completely fine with that. I don't need a gavel.
You don't want a gavel to execute at home?
No, that's okay.
Call the board? All right.
So we, looks like we're on to board member reports.
And if you want to do that during the second meeting, because we do have another meeting this evening, we can hold that till then.
I would just like to report that I think Madison did a great job in planning our days off for Christmas, that we haven't had to use any snow days. And being the parent of two young children, I'm also grateful that school is back in session.
I will tell you, I had friends that have children still in school that had the vacation that never ended, and they were posting that up. This is the fourth week of the Christmas vacation, because my one friend sends a kid to private school, and they got out the 15th.
Oh, goodness, wow.
So, yeah, they were like, when are they ever going to go back to school?
Well, and my children were excited to go, too. My daughter was up at 4:45, her bus doesn't come until 6:50. She was up at 4:45 curling her hair, so, and she's just in the elementary school, so, you too, huh? All right.
I will be on a panel at Lakeland Community College tomorrow for newly elected officials. I was asked to be on a panel to speak to newly elected officials. I explained that I myself am just newly elected. I was appointed two years ago to the board, but they asked for school board members, and I was contacted by Kevin Malicek, who now works for Lakeland, former county commissioner, so I'll be speaking tomorrow at Lakeland Community College on a panel to other school board members. There'll probably be like at least two of them. Partying my wisdom, which will take a few seconds, and then we'll move along, so. Any other board member reports? Okay, time, date, and location of our regular meetings. Is there a motion to adopt this schedule that's listed in the agenda?
I'll move. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. The Tax Incentive Review Council.
I'll move. I'll second.
Who are we appointing as the board's representative? I think it's typically one of you five, but I, and I'm not sure they meet, but this is in case they do. So that was my thought, was we needed to actually name someone. So who would like to serve, does anyone want to explain what that role is?
Have you done this in the past?
I don't know as if, I don't know as if Madison has had to attend any meetings. Typically, if you have a tax abatement in your area that is tied to certain thresholds, you know, increasing number of employees, payroll, investment in the community, they have a meeting every year. In the two communities we serve, they do tax increment financing or other forms of abatement that aren't tied to that type of job growth. So this is in case we ever get one of those types of deals.
Which isn't very likely.
Not with the other ways they can defer taxes to help the infrastructure. So given the form of government that we have, it seems like it's unlikely that this will be necessary, but we still need to name someone.
Should something happen, I'll be happy to go and ask Michael all the questions I need to ask.
All right. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Is there a motion to appoint Larry Armstrong to this position?
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Larry.
Sure, thank you. Roll call. Michael Howery?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. Okay, do we have any volunteers to serve as the OSBA Legislative Liaison?
Well, I've done it for two years, and I really do kind of enjoy going to that meeting and watching how it unfolds, and I'll do it again.
Fabulous, thank you.
Any other interest?
I need a, is there, isn't there, yeah?
I think I agreed to be your backup if, yeah.
Those are, that is the delegate and the alternate to the OSBA Capitol Conference. This is the one, it's, I think it's slightly different, although I don't know what different duties this would have.
It sounds very close to the same, so, still.
It would be the person who OSBA would communicate all the legislative action to, and then you would disseminate it to the board.
If something should happen throughout the year and they want to.
Right, and they, I think they're pretty good about sending it to everybody, because we're all on those lists.
They do.
But if there's ever a time you want to go and be an advocate down, you know, and talk in front of the Senate Education Committee and testify and do those kinds of things on behalf of OSBA.
So we have a motion and a second, is that right? Do we?
No, I think, do we motion? I don't think we did.
Oh, that's because you agreed to be Tax Incentive Review Council as well. Okay. Motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you again, Larry. Roll call. Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. All right, apparently we have an OSBA Student Achievement Liaison.
Jackman used to do this, didn't he, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing it, unless someone else has an interest.
Any other interest?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call. Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. Consent calendar? It looks like we have a number of items on the consent calendar. Does anybody want to address that?
These are your basically operating procedures for the year. Roberts versus Arter, establishing advisory committees, authorizing us to use particular legal firms, reaffirming our policies, allowing us to pay the bills, if Mike needs to do any necessary borrowing, investment of funds, basically giving us the authority to run the school district.
We have to reapprove these every year at the January meeting, and a lot of this is just so that they don't have to come to us or call a meeting every time they need to do something.
One question about the tax advance, Mike. Do we often do that?
We do get tax advances, because all the bills are due mid-Fbruary, but as people pay them, there is a requirement that the county auditor and the county treasurer advance the money to the school district. We can also, if it's not one of the scheduled ones, like we had to do one year when catastrophic cost was promised in June and didn't come until July, I have to contact the county auditor and say, I need an advance in June to be able to close the books. This allows it, we haven't, other than that one time, requested an advance outside of the normal schedule, and that's been here and my previous job, so.
Just a quick question, when you say catastrophic costs, and I know what the catastrophic costs are, but they never give us exactly, we've been, I know, we've been over this a lot, they never give us what we're entitled to, but do we, when do we know what they're going to give us?
Well, we know how much we're going to file for, probably in a couple of months. There's certain other costs that we have to accumulate to let other districts know what we're charging them, so they can try and get some back from the state. When we file and they tell us when the payment's going to be made, like, they'll say, payment's going to be made Friday, and here's the amount, that's how much we know when we're getting. We can file for, and I think we have filed for, $600,000 or $700,000, but we don't know until everybody files and they figure out how much they've underfunded the line item, so they can systematically reduce all of the reimbursements, do we know exactly how much we're going to get? So it's, it's not known until the check hits the bank.
So then, when they didn't reimburse it until July, when they were supposed to reimburse it in June, did we know what that reimbursement was going to be in June?
Yes, that one I did, because we were tracking it, because it was 600 and some thousand, and at that point, you know, we've built up our ending balance over, over the years, but at that point, we were ending with about $60,000 in the bank, and the reimbursement was in the mid-$600,000 range. So I had almost daily conversations with somebody at the Ohio Department of Education, and as soon as it, I knew it was promised in June, I knew I'd better get an advance, because it wasn't coming until July. But she was able to tell me exactly how much it was going to be, and so I had an advance ready at the auditor, Lake County Auditor's office, knowing that as soon as they said, hey, by the way, it's not coming until July, I could get the advance and balance the books. That's, that's one of the few times that we had any notice exactly how much it was going to be. Now, we get it earlier, but we still don't know what percentage we're going to be reducing.
Right. Thank you.
And then, I think the other two big things to note on, on the consent calendar, is it gives me the authority by the board to hire and accept resignations as needed in between meetings.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call. Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. Tax budget? At 5:45, we held the tax budget hearing, and there were no questions from the public. And I was talking to Dave earlier about this forum. The purpose of the forum is to be able to set the rates, which are going to be on your taxes, which, the bill came out, we have the tax budget hearing tonight, and also tonight we're approving the rates. So some county auditors have done away with the tax budget, ours has not, although they've streamlined it. Basically, what it does is it tells you, in the general fund, what our balances are going to be to justify the levies that we have out there. In the debt service fund, where we pay the, pay our bond and other debt, it lets them know what our debt payments are, and in our permanent improvement levy, it just lets them know what we're going to do with the money, in a single dollar amount. I've already provided that information to the county auditor about a month and a half ago through an email. This is just the formal form that we still have to do. Tax budget hearing, publish it in the paper, have the board president sign it, it should be approved, and give it to the county auditor. Does not give us any additional spending authority or the ability to levy any more taxes.
When are you going to see the first dollar of the last levy that passed?
That was on the tax bills that went out last week.
So, January?
Yep. Maybe January, but it'll be the first advance, it'll be included in the first advance we get. Is there a motion to approve the tax budget?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. Call to order the January 9th, 2018, meeting of the Madison Local Board of Education. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Larry Armstrong?
Here.
Sean Douglas?
Here.
Michael Howery?
Here.
Michelle Hayes?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0. Call to order the January 9th, 2018, meeting of the Madison Local Board of Education. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Larry Armstrong?
Here.
Sean Douglas?
Here.
Michael Howery?
Here.
Michelle Hayes?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Vote is 4-0. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from December 12th, 2017?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Vote is 4-0. Board member reports? Does anybody like to report?
Yes, I'd like to thank Angela for scheduling a meeting today with evangelista over what I brought up at the last meeting about the A&amp;G test that the American Legion gives. I think it was a very good meeting.
It was, excellent meeting.
Mike was a little concerned that he, you would think he was being critical, and I didn't get that impression from him.
No.
He just pointed out that, you know, other, what's he calling it, districts of the Legion posts have somewhat higher numbers of students taking the test and a little bit better results. We've had some winners in the past that have done very well, but he is just concerned about, you know, a few years ago about our numbers going down, less kids were taking the tests, and this year he just seemed a little disappointed in the results. And when I brought that up last meeting, I had never seen the test, or I, that's not an easy test. I wouldn't want to compare my results to some of our students.
I haven't taken it yet. I haven't taken it.
So, that being said, you know, he's, we met with John Dragus also, and in my mind, it's as much about, you know, joining the community, the Legion and the community, giving some kids the opportunities that they might not be aware of. There's scholarships, there's $1,000 scholarships available, there's trips to Washington, to Gettysburg, to Boys State and stuff in Ohio, so there's a lot of opportunity for some kids that might not be aware or might not be able to.
Well, and I think John suggested bringing our Legion veterans in for Constitution Day and making that connection stronger, so, you know, I think it's important, as we see in our government, a decline in people exercising their right to vote, a connection to government, you know, this is important, just as important as anything we teach.
And the Legion's having their own meeting tonight, and he's very excited to bring back, you know, what we talked about today, back to them, and I just, it's a good thing all around for everyone.
And he gave us extra copies of the test, if any of you would like to take it.
I would like to see it. I don't know about taking it, I would maybe not share it.
Well, he did give me the answer key, so.
Sure, I'll take it.
Yeah, you guys want it?
Yeah.
I'll take it.
I'm with Gene, I'd like to look at it.
Yeah, I don't know about taking it, I'll let you know.
Larry, do you have one already?
I got it, I got it.
Dave, would you like one?
Oh, yeah.
Mike?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you. Like the answer key also, please?
Joe? Oh, Joe's going to take one. All right.
The answer C for most of these.
Yeah, I'll take this.
All right.
Well, it seems like a long time ago, but the Christmas program, which I was able to attend with some of my grandchildren, was just absolutely outstanding, always a highlight of the year, and thoroughly enjoyed that. There's nothing like voice and instrumental to come together and set a good holiday mood for everybody, so I really appreciated that.
It was very well done. I agree.
Any other board member reports? Moving on to the first public participation portion on agenda items only. Attendees would have five minutes to address the board. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recommendations of the treasurer. Thank you, I only have one item prior to getting to the items on the agenda. You should have received an email back on December 22nd that the audit was released by the auditor of state. It would have contained three things, one, a link to the audit, a link to the management letter, and a link to the transmittal letter. I don't know if Gene, you had gotten that, because everybody else's email was already in the system prior to, prior to that, and I just thought of this, I can send you a copy of that email, so you can have access to the documents. Typically, I print out the audit and make sure the board has a copy, but I thought in this day and age, it's easily accessible either through the email or on the auditor of state's website. We will also, if we haven't done so already, put a link to the audit on the district webpage. So, again, it was a clean audit, except for the fact that we don't file on generally accepted accounting principles, and so that was mentioned in the management letter, and then there was one other minor issue. Total effect was like $40, but because of the type of issue that they brought forward, it had to go in the management letter. We had a couple other items that we discussed, and it was just, we took care of it before they left, it wasn't very meaningful, but as auditors, when they find something, we address them immediately. The item in the management letter, we actually put different procedures in place to make sure it doesn't happen again. I'd like to thank every employee in the district, you know, it's, my staff does a lot of it to make sure we have a clean audit, but honestly, if everybody handling cash, which is almost everybody, because they collect fees in the buildings, if everybody wasn't doing what they were supposed to do, the audit would have been clean. So while the treasurer usually gets the credit, it is everybody that is following the rules, because they not only check the financial piece, they also check to make sure our bullying's out on the website, all of our policies are up to date, the spending in the federal programs is correct, and the IEPs are, you know, the services provided in the IEP is, is as listed. So it takes more than just the four people in the treasurer's office to get a clean audit, so I want to say thank you to every employee in this district who's doing what they're supposed to be doing on a daily basis. Okay, items in the agenda, the first is to approve the financial reports for all funds, the fund-to-fund transfer report, and the check payment register for December 2017. I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Michael Howery?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
The vote is 4-0. The next item is to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Again, this is, these are the rates that are actually appearing on your tax bill as it's been issued already.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call. Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to just say that Robert Leach, for those who may not be familiar, was the assistant superintendent in Madison for many years. Prior to that, he was high school principal, so a longtime Madison employee, and this has been active since his death, probably about ten years ago.
He was my high school principal.
He was a teacher when I was in high school.
Wow, so, yeah. Oh, Leach is legendary.
Yes, he is.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Vote is four zero. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Okay, well, under my reports, I'd like to start with, this is School Board Appreciation Month. Each year in January, the Ohio School Boards Association recognizes members of boards of education for their service to public schools, and without those in the community willing to step up and serve in the capacity of board members, public schools could not exist. On behalf of the Ohio School Boards Association and the residents and community of Madison, thank you for your dedication and service. I'm going to step into my office. Please. Dave, you can help.
You're welcome to join her, Dave.
So, we'd like to thank you for your service.
Thanks, Angela. Thank you. Outstanding.
Thank you. Thought I'd mix it up this year, instead of the cake coming off of the holidays and trying for wellness, I thought a rose would be a different touch.
Thank you.
You were so welcome.
It'll be popular when I get home with the wife.
Say, I stopped, honey, and got you a rose. Don't watch the video.
Don't you answer that.
In all seriousness, school board work is hard work, it is a thankless job, and as I've shared with you before, talking with my colleagues around the state, we are very blessed in Madison to have the board we have. We are a team, we work well together, we collaborate, we don't always agree, but we work well together, and it is a privilege to work for this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now that I'm.
Ready for your recommendations?
I am ready for more report. I have a few things.
Oh, all right, good.
I want to talk a little bit about the January in-service yesterday, because I, you know, was not a popular person first thing in the morning, but as I told teachers, we cancel school for safety of students, not for staff. And so, we did have our in-service yesterday, and I think after the initial jolt, they had to come back to work on January 8th and get going, it was very well received, and it was a really collaborative effort with our PE personnel. They were highlighted, and that's a department sometimes that doesn't always get much attention because people think it's just an extra. Well, in this day and age of wellness and fitness and all the things people are dealing with in life, they presented, we had a section from our EAP group on stress management, we had two of the high school PE teachers present on how to use the fitness equipment in the fitness room, we had one of our PE teachers talk about brain breaks that you can provide students in the classroom, and then another PE teacher on weight-bearing exercises, and then I, the other half of the morning for them was a presenter from Job and, or Adams Board, the project resolve on the opiate task force and on heroin, and that was quite sobering. There was, that was, like I said, teachers are a hard group to engage, and they were very, very attentive during those presentations. So, it was a good way to start off the 2018 year. And Janet Sovi, who is our wellness champion in the district, I give her all sorts of credit, because afterwards, and this was optional, because by contract, they have two hours of meeting time, and then they can use the day for grades, we had a wellness fair. We had probably over a hundred staff members go through the wellness fair, and there were all sorts of different things. We had a couple credit union, we had a bank, so you had the financial fitness, we had some people with the chiropractic group, we had university hospitals giving baseline screenings, and so it was very well done. And the wellness committee did a nice job putting this together, so I want to give them kudos. Going back to last year a little bit, just because we haven't met since the coats for kids, and even though you read about it and you saw pictures of it, I just want to go on record in saying that was such a powerful day, and I think Joe back there can attest to how moving that was, Dave went over, Mike went over, you know, to see the joy on those little kids' faces at getting a brand-new coat, because we know some of those kids probably never had a brand-new coat.
Just in time.
Yeah.
It really was, too.
Yes, just in time. And that leads me to another set of kudos, even though I was probably on him a little bit for some parking lots today, I have to give Pat Smith some kudos, because, you know, over break, when he was supposed to be off, he came in, he plowed, he checked buildings, his team came in and plowed. You know, there were times I said, no, you guys are entitled to your vacation, you don't have to come in, because these buildings aren't supposed to be in use for these particular days. But last week, when it was so cold, he was in checking every building to make sure nothing froze, there was no damage, and you know, you don't have to tell him, he just does it. And it's, you know, you don't get people like that. So, even though I get on him once in a while, and he probably hates to see my number come up, I do want to give him a big shout-out, because he does just a phenomenal job.
That's huge, because one broken pipe in a building like this can destroy him so much.
Yep, yep. So, he is all over the, all over these things.
How many plows do we have? How many snowplows do we have?
Do we have four or five trucks, I think?
Two at the bus garage also plow, but really four that are out and about at the end of the building. Nothing broke down? That's rough.
Well, I mean, one day, I think in between, because we only had a couple people plowing at one point last week, because some of the guys were on vacation, then Pat said I had to, you know, fix my plow, so, you know, they're always maintaining the equipment and trying to keep it going, and it's a thankless job.
That was a lot of snow. That was a lot of snow. Push her up to.
Definitely. Yep.
Every morning.
So, you know, and it was, I mean, every day, I was like, oh, my gosh, I'm so glad I'm not up here right now. But I think we're all going to get it this weekend. Yep. And my last item is if you have items or things you want to talk about for, during our January retreat, please get them to me. I'll be working on that agenda over the next week, and I'd like to have that finalized, you know, or at least a good draft by the weekend, and Sean and I, I think, are going to meet on Tuesday to go over it, go over it and any other items that you might want to talk about, so please let me know. This is your day, our day, to sort of come together as a group. We haven't done this in a long, long time. We do have the book on family engagement, and I have a few things that I know I want to bring to the forefront, but, you know, let me know.
Angela, the wellness fair that you talked about with the staff, is that at all connected with the health insurance premiums?
Well, you know, that is another item I wanted to talk about. This morning, we met as an executive committee, as you know, I'm chair of the executive committee this year, and we just had our transition to our new team, because we went out to RFP from our previous administrator slash consultant, and the executive committee decided to split those functions back up again, and I can tell you, first off, that, you know, if today's meeting is any indication of how this is going to go, we've got a dynamite team. Ben Katz from Find My Benefits is the consultant, Mary K. Bruner is the administrator, was the administrator previously, before they went with Gallagher for a couple of years, and these two are so in sync and in tune. And we did talk about wellness this morning, because wellness is, and I think when we were interviewing Ben, some of the things he talked about. Every group has a wellness committee, every district in the consortium, there's an executive wellness committee that sort of guides the budget, but I think they're going to start looking at different ways to attack wellness. Right now, we do it on an individual incentive basis and, you know, providing a cash incentive, that's what the consortium has decided, but there's other ways to do it. When we were interviewing Benny, talked about doing it through reduced rates in some ways, so if you do certain things, you may not have to pay as much. So, I'm very excited at the direction the consortium's going. Mike, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I actually am one of the four committee members for the wellness committee for the Lake County Schools Council, and we've been building this Bodies Done Right program over a number of years, and we are still considering whether that's the direction we want to continue, or whether there's a better way to reach people. We have districts that participate a little better than others. Madison used to be a low-participation district, but, you know, Janet and Angela have led the charge to get more people involved, and so we are. But sometimes the financial incentive just isn't great enough for people to participate, so we are looking at other avenues. Also, we ought to note that the funds for the wellness part of yesterday's meeting were provided as wellness incentive money that the consortium gives to each district. Angela mentioned the two workout rooms, that wasn't general fund money that the district spent, that was wellness incentive money that was given on behalf of the consortium to each individual district to do as they saw fit on an approved plan from the consortium.
And the high school is also used for classes through that pep grant from last year, so we have really found a way to, I think, be cutting-edge with our staff without having to, you know, it doesn't cost the general fund anything, and hopefully, I think after yesterday, Coach Willis said if people are interested in the offseason here, he's willing to run some classes after school and sign up, and so, just to get people engaged and motivated to live a healthier lifestyle, because it's important.
Lake County has seen, you know, great improvements from their wellness fairs, and they've tied those to the health insurance premiums. So, there's a discount, there's actually, for every subgroup, there's a wellness rate and a non-wellness rate. So, if you attend the health fair, and it takes about a half an hour, and they're going to do blood sugar and cholesterol and heart rate and a variety of things, if you attend the health fair, which literally is thirty minutes of your life during which you're being paid, because they're during the workday, then you have at least, the way Lake County is structured, it's over a hundred-dollar discount for the year on your health insurance. So, you're getting paid basically a hundred bucks to go to a thirty-minute event, but they have found a whole lot of folks who had really high cholesterol who did, who had blood sugar issues and didn't know. So, they're identifying those issues very early so that folks can receive treatment, and, you know, there are typically, Lake Health is the provider that the county commissioners use to conduct those, and then they make referrals, you know, to your primary care physician or whoever the appropriate medical provider is. They've seen significant improvement, and typically, your health insurance provider will either provide dollars or discounts to your overall premiums for participating in those. So, that's why I wondered if they were connected, because I know Lake County's had a lot of success with it, and Lake County also has opened their system up, and they provide health insurance to other groups, like, for instance, the Madison Public Library buys into the county commissioner's health insurance plan. Don't know if that would be good for us, I know we're part of a consortium, and it's a little bit more complicated when you have so many districts involved and so many decision-makers as part of the group, but certainly helpful, no matter what, making sure that we participate in those wellness activities.
Medical Mutual does provide a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant back to the consortium to help fund the wellness activities, so the consortium as a whole, which represents twelve districts in Lake, Joga, and Cogga County, spends about four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars a year on wellness. And we learned today that diabetes, about nine percent of our population has it.
Wow.
So, as the committee sits to determine the wellness program for the upcoming school year, I think that's something we're going to have to address on how, how can we reach out to those people to get the screening, and then either through the wellness program address it, or through disease management through Medical Mutual Ohio, manage it, because if you can get that percentage down, it's savings on the premiums, since we're self-insured, then it's savings for each member district on their premiums.
Another item during those health fairs is you can often offer a free flu shot when you go, and so coupling it with that, you want, generally speaking, you want the staff to have a flu shot anyway, because they're just not going to be here, and then we're going to be paying substitutes.
Right, right.
So, it's significantly less expensive to pay for a twenty-dollar flu shot than it is to pay for a substitute for the day, but that's just another incentive, I'm sure you've heard of those, but.
Right, and our incentive program through the consortium has, you know, a whole sheet of items where you can earn up to four-hundred dollars a year on a flu shot, you give your receipt, while I may have paid for it out of my pocket, I can be, I can receive an incentive through the wellness funds allocated by the consortium, so there's a lot of that. Attend the pre-screening, do financial classes, they're trying to reach the wellness of the employee beyond just the physical wellness.
Sure.
And they have really, I think, you know, BDR this year has stepped up their presence quite a bit. Like I said, they provided somebody to do the stress management session, and before Christmas, they did do a financial, you know, management session, so, no, that, well, I think.
It was.
EAP did it, but with, I think Bodies Done Right coordinated it.
Right, they're trying to take over coordination of all of our wellness activities.
So, it was well done, and I, you know, I think Janet came to me with the idea, I think in November, so next year, she knows we'll start planning that whole health fair earlier, and she's got ideas already to go. She joked yesterday, though, she goes, I'm not getting my blood pressure checked, because I know it's elevated.
White coat syndrome.
Yep. So, and that's what I have for my report.
Okay, I have two items tonight. Just for your information, January 29th, at the middle school, our district spelling bee is going to take place, it's 9:00 AM, you are all invited, and in the past, sometimes the board president has said a few words before, and that's optional, but I'd like to invite you to that. We will actually, if you plan to come, I would suggest getting there by around 8:45, we will start the district spelling bee right at nine o'clock, and that represents grades four through eight. Students who have one at the building level and then advance to the district. High-pressure, and it's kind of fun.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah.
It is fun. Where's the staff?
It's at the middle school in the cafeteria, and Mr. Meese will be filming for us.
I have to say, it's more fun now that I don't have to pronounce.
It can be a little stressful.
It can be.
The other piece of information, I wanted to just let you know, we're at the very early phases of this, but there is a Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant that is being made available to districts on a competitive basis. The State of Ohio was awarded thirty-five million dollars from the U.S. Department of Education for the purpose of advancing programs for early, for literacy, actually, K to twelve, and our districts are already pretty involved at North Elementary this year with some new, some new approaches to, to improving literacy, and we think that might give us a good opportunity to be considered for this grant. We had to submit an intent-to-apply survey, and that's been done, the deadline for that is tomorrow, and we should find out in the next week, well, we will find out in the next week, because there's a couple days in Columbus that someone will need to attend if we're considered to be allowed to apply for the grant. So, again, very early stages in this process, but we hope to go after some more funds to help us to take the learning that we're doing at North Elementary and move it to South beginning next year. This is a three-year grant, so it would really support that work, and then also to look at how we transition the learning, the new ways of teaching that we'll be doing at our elementaries up through the middle school as well. So, we're hopeful, again, early on, and I'll keep you informed on our progress through that.
Is it too early to tell how it's working across the street there?
Well, it's, we're one semester in in a four-year process. However, at our administrative meeting yesterday, we had some testimonial from Mrs. Rogus across the way, you know, some of the teachers that have dug into this, they're now tracking data on their students based on the new techniques that they're using, and they're very encouraged by some of the results, which makes them only want to explore this a little deeper. It's been, truly, it's been, I don't think, I don't think the teachers were as prepared for how.
Labor, it's, there are a lot of learning and a lot of work, and it is.
On top of their day job.
It's almost like a college course, intensive college course, so.
And we, yeah, I mean, we really appreciate how they've taken that on, on top of their regular workload, and really had a very positive attitude, and seeing some results is always going to be motivating to want to continue with it, so I feel like we're in a pretty good place at this point, and we're going to start to work on how we prepare the staff at South to be ready for the work that they're going to be doing next year, so.
Yeah, they won't have quite the level of growing pains, I think, because North was, you know, first in, so we've kind of learned and those kinds of things, but the team over there has been amazing, and they go to their second session or third session?
This, next week.
Week.
Next week.
Is it the second?
The second, second face-to-face with the national presenter. I would say, sitting in on some of the meetings, it's almost like they're speaking a different language at this point than they were in August.
Oh, yeah.
Some of the things that they're talking about in terms of what they listen for when they listen to students read and how that informs their practice, it's pretty exciting stuff, so we're early in the process, but I like, I like where we're heading, and if we could secure some funds, we're going to do it either way with South, but if we could secure some funds, it would really be helpful.
Well, additional funds, because we still do have the grant from the. Well, additional funds. Because we still do have the, the grant from the SST to take it to the next level next year. But.
Right.
The additional funds would, would help.
Now, I noticed in the newsletter, you specifically mentioned the third grade and that is showing third grade reading.
Yes.
That's, that's exciting.
It was exciting.
I'm surprised you passed that one by.
Third grade reading scores from fall came in and they, you know, are much better than where we were last year going into this point in the year. So, we will offer tutoring for those students that need some remediation, hopefully to close that gap. They'll take the Iowa. Do you know when that's?
Yeah, I think we're looking in late February, early March, so that hopefully we have the results before they take the state test. So...
So, those are some exciting things. One thing we did, we are looking at, because I thought about this today when we thought about testing, is we test so late in the spring for the end-of-course exams. So, we're trying to track down from the state when those, for the few students that might need a point here or there on those end-of-course exams before graduation. So, I will keep you posted as to what we find out because I'm not sure what we will do if we don't have those scores back before graduation on May 19th. It could, we could be having another conversation. So, I will keep you informed.
I saw the library in their newsletter, their Friends newsletter, said they were having an ACT or SAT. I'm not sure which.
Oh, yes. They've been doing this last few years.
Yeah. My son took it last year. He'll take it again this year and then he's going to take the ACT or SAT coming up. He's a junior, so he'll be taking that. But I saw they're offering it again. It was a very reasonable price. Is that our staff who are going to be conducting?
Yes, our staff does work on it with the, in conjunction with the library. They come over and they use our building for some of the sessions. Your son will be taking the ACT as his, in March, as will every junior at Madison High School on our, our testing day. In the near future, we'll be also coming to you and sharing with you the additional project that we have for some of our seniors that are on the fence for graduation as one of the additional pathways. And as always with the Ohio Department of Education and our legislature, it looks like there will be additional changes coming down the pike for the class of 2019 and 2020. And that is to be posted. But I will tell you, it's an election year, so nobody wants to have horrible graduation rates going into an election year. So, they, they are, they are talking and moving. So, things are going to move fast, I think. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Then I'm ready for my recommendations. First is our employment motion and we're asking you to approve the following persons. Jamie Lee under a long-term substitute contract from January 8th, 2018 through May 25th, 2018 to perform the duties of Christopher Dodd. The following substitute teachers is approved by the Lake County Educational Service Center and the Madison Local School District's Assistant Superintendent under a one-year limited substitute teacher contract. Jamie Gazo and ending with Jason Kranek. To employ Megan Prebula as an educational assistant, special needs at Madison Pre-K for three hours per day, four days per week. And asking you to approve the following transfer, transfer, Jill Short from a three-and-a-half-hour food service cashier at Madison High School to an eight-hour-per-day custodian at Madison High School, effective January 2nd, 2018.
On move?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Vote is 4-0.
All right. I am going to go into some numerous resolutions. We are resolution-heavy, but we've got lots of things. The first three of the resolutions are honoring our chamber winners, which we will be presenting at the Chamber of Commerce Dinner on the 26th of January. Recognizing Dworkin and Bernstein Company LPA as the recipient of the Eastern Lake County Chamber of Commerce 2018 Business of the Year Award. A resolution recognizing Bill Horvath as the recipient of the Eastern Lake County Chamber of Commerce 2018 Citizen of the Year Award. And a resolution recognizing the Friends of the Madison Public Library as the recipient of the Eastern Lake County Chamber of Commerce 2018 Heritage Award winner. We also have a resolution recognizing Mike Smith on his achievement of winning his 300th game on Wednesday, December 20th, 2017. And we have a resolution recognizing Justin Time Staffing, who made a large donation to Coats for Kids to help area students, as also a resolution for Buyer's Product for making a large donation to Coats to Kids to help our students at North Elementary. And we would also like to offer a resolution to Coats for Kids for their generous donation of the coats and volunteers to help Madison North Elementary students. And then, another resolution recognizing Nadia Cruz for her collection of socks. And in this past drive through Madison School, 1,640 pairs were donated through the Madison local schools and her total donations for 2017 were 2,050. And then, we have a retirement resolution for James Redmaterd on his retirement at the end of last year as a custodian from Madison Middle School. And that are all, those are all our resolutions abbreviated, but still pretty long.
They're four pages on the agenda, just with that.
I know.
On move?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to just, Mike Smith, I must have saw his 301st win the other night against Willoughby South. That was kind of fun to go watch. I think they've had a tough season with their star players, hurt their ankle, but they, they played tough and it was a good game. Also, the whole Coats for Kids is, that was, that was an incredible gift to our community.
Really was.
Whoever, however that happened, it's just a huge thanks to them for, for all that.
It really, I think, happened, you know, out of the air. They contacted us a week before it happened and said, "Can you make this happen?" And people moved heaven and earth to make it happen. And they, you know, Joe is a teacher in that building and they had all sorts of things going on that week, but that was probably the best way to bring in the holiday season. And I just want to, you know, commend Nadia, too. She's, I've met her at the middle school and took a picture of her with her socks and, you know, it's, it's a passion to, to want to help. And at such a young age, learning the value of service and giving back to your community.
Huge.
I think, I'm glad to see the chamber recognizing the Friends of Madison Library. They do so much good for the library that hosting their fundraisers, also just, I know they do a book sale every year from donated books to the library. And all of those funds go back to the library in one way or another to support programs or services, many of which are, you know, to the children in our district, many of which are to the adults and the elderly as well. But just a, a great organization, total, total charity just to be offered to help Madison. So, glad to see that.
And I agree. Making libraries relevant in an age where everything could be digital and, and they have, the whole Madison Public Library and this organization help to make libraries a, it really is the center of the community.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Vote is 4-0.
I have nothing on the consent calendar this evening. I was hoping to have, but I think I'll have to put that as some business items on our January 20th agenda. The College Credit Plus Contract with Lakeland, but we don't have those yet. I did, I guess, over the last week, there was a message left that Dr. Beveridge wants to have a meeting. So, I don't know if he's reaching out personally to the districts this year, but I will keep you informed. And that's it.
Well, we'll now open our second public participation section. Folks could address any issue to the board. They have a limit of five minutes. Seen no attendees. I'm guessing we're not going to have anyone. Is there a need for executive session?
No.
Is there a motion for adjournment?
On move? Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Gene Sensi?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michael Howery?
Yes.
Vote is 4-0.